All right, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Ms. Lane, if you could lead us in the pledge.
I would like to lead it, gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's a vote. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
And you're opposed. And we're here for a special meeting for the interview of two finalists for Parks and Recreation Director position, Graham Blank Township Parks and Recreation. We will open the floor for any citizen comments at this time. Or anybody that wished to make public comment. Seeing none, we will bring the discussion back here to the board. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Limita and Ms. Nedzwicki to kind of give us a little bit of an overview.
We got here today by way of going through with the board subcommittee to go through the selection process. We did conduct some initial interviews, some phone interviews, which led to a selection process for pre-screening and the initial round of interviews. And then before you today are two candidates that we find very intriguing and we think we wanted to come back and have the full board be able to have an opportunity to ask some questions. One of the things that we will just point out, that we have seven questions for the candidates, each candidate will be asked the same question. If, as you go through, obviously stick to the wording of the questions. If there is a follow-up required, we would prefer that the follow-up is, you could ask someone to expound on it, but we don't want to go too far off topic, just to keep us safe from any protected questions. And after both candidates, we've had the opportunity for the board to interview them, the subcommittee will reconvene after short recess with the board and be able to have an opportunity to discuss, at which point the subcommittee will come back and hopefully be able to make a recommendation on their candidate of choice to the full board for consideration.
Anything else, Ms. Nedzwicki?
No.
Ms. Manzoor?
Yep, so I'd like to expound just a little bit on what Superintendent Limita said, because he kind of ran through a lot in a few short words, but I want to make sure that everyone understands the level of effort that was really taken on by the group. So, again, this whole process started in December when the Parks and Rec Subcommittee was named. It included Kent Thomas, Lonnie, Superintendent Limita, HR Specialist Nedzwicki, and myself. And we met numerous times during that month to put together job descriptions, including the director. We worked on a vision for the Parks and Rec, a mission statement, got preliminary org charts together, got a budget together, made sure that the director position was posted near the end of December. We went out to four or five different recruiting sites nationally. We, excuse me, made sure that, we went to the sites that were going to be most seen by Parks and Rec professionals. By the end of January, we had received, I think, 29 applications, plus or minus. And then the candidate credentials were distributed to the entire board. And some of us spent literally hours going through those different resumes, evaluating, comparing, contrasting criteria, that kind of thing. And so, from those candidates, again, we narrowed it down to seven that were used, that we took the two-step process of the phone pre-screen. So we screened those. We ended up bringing five, we ended up bringing five people actually in for interviewing. And then that's how we've gotten to this point here with the two, that the subcommittee, through these various rounds, feel are the best candidates for the board to review in total. So, I don't know if you maybe were going to mention this, or Ms. Nedzwicki, but I think we wanted to ask the candidates to take a few minutes at the beginning to introduce themselves to the board. Then with the questions, like you said, and maybe the candidate have maybe two or three minutes apiece to answer those questions, just so we can keep this rolling along.
Yeah, it's an excellent point. And that is how, Mr. Paris, as we bring you forward, we would like you to take the first few minutes and just, because not everybody on the panel had the opportunity to sit through the initial round of interviews, so some of us may be more familiar with you than others, but to provide us that brief bio, your history, and what got you here today, it would be very helpful, just kind of as a get-to-know-you, and then I think you'll see the questions, so they'll get to know you a little bit better by the end of the process.
What else?
We would ask that you keep your responses back. We're trying to stay on track, and we think that it should probably take about, you know, 30 to 40 minutes to get through this entire thing.
Okay, so we're okay. All right, so, Mr. Paris? Good evening, good afternoon, I guess, still.
Good afternoon. You have my resume in front of you. Just a little bit about me, I'm a lifelong Genesee County resident, with the exception of living out of the country for a few years. My wife and I were in the Peace Corps. I grew up just down the road here, near Hemp Hill and Saginaw. Lived in the city until I was about 14, moved to Davison, I'm a Powers grad, U of M Flint. Then I went to Northern Michigan with the idea that I'd play football. That did not work out, but I stayed up there and got a degree in conservation land management. And from there, I, as you can see, I had some varied work until I got back from overseas, and then I got head over heels into Parks and Recreation. And I'm just glad to be here. I've had two wonderful experiences as director, executive director in Parks and Recreation. And I'm looking to continue that. And I've learned a lot about, when I was in Davison, that's when I first met Chuck Creasy. And he was sort of a mentor of mine. And then when I moved on to Southern Lakes Parks and Rec, I kept in touch with Chuck and Kay. And then I've modeled a lot of the things after what you had done here, because you were one of the first Parks and Rec authorities at that level. I'd say I'm, you know, a park commission with schools involved in multiple municipalities. And I told the committee before that one of the things that really interested me in this was, I built two Parks and Recreation commissions. And in Davison, when the political bodies couldn't come to an agreement on how to move forward, the city of Davison took back Parks and Recreation, and we transitioned it into what the township is doing now. And so I've got that experience as well. And so I think those things are really good matches for me. And that's where I am.
Okay. So I'll start off with the first question. Mr. Paris, what do you think makes a good organization? What makes a community parks and recreation department, quote, you know, one of the best or best place to visit?
Well, I think organizationally, if you're looking at any type of organizational development or structure, that the board, the staff, and the public have a clear understanding of where they're trying to go. And with a new organization, especially with Parks and Recreation, I think you have to decide who you want to be now, who you want to be five years from now, and who you want to be 15 years from now. And that's one of the things we ran into in both Davison and Southern Lakes, is they didn't know really how they wanted to grow. And so what we did is, we did a lot of, I would say, public forums, meeting with service groups, meeting with school districts, meeting with municipalities, to try and formulate what it was they wanted. Was it a focus, for instance, like Genesee County Parks is resource-based, they don't do a lot of programming outside of Crossroads Village. But in, at lower levels, it's more program-based and less on resources. So I think those things, getting to know what the elected officials want, what the people want, and then what the staff can do, is how you develop that.
Okay, very good. Mr. Manzoor?
Yes. So, would you please describe how your prior positions required you to be proficient in the development, analysis of operational programming, and capital budgets?
Yes, one of the differences, the commissions, as opposed to a department head would be, is that you have to develop and design everything. And so, at Southern Lakes, when I went in, it was literally a pad of paper and a pen. And I think I really got that job because of the development I did in Davison. And we had to start from, and I heard somebody, you were talking about vision and mission statements, and developing those processes. And then, in terms of how we started, how you start an organization, and I think I told the committee this before, we did what we call a recreation analysis, a recreation inventory. And they've got basically two parts. You go out and you find every facility in, say, Graham Blank Township, or the surrounding area, that offers some element of Parks and Recreation. It could be Roll Haven, it could be the bowling alley, it could be Warwick, it could be any of your spiritual-based organizations that have basketball leagues, any of that. You find all those locations and you map them out. Then you find all of the activities that are going on in the community. So you're doing a recreation analysis and a physical analysis. And what we did is, at Southern Lakes, we overlaid those two things. And what we saw is opportunities for growth. And that's how we started looking at program development. And then we started working with Lake Fenton Schools first, on a transition of their community education program. And we started looking at all the ways that we could find collaborators, who are we in competition with, who were, what areas were completely wide open. And what we found by doing that analysis was, there was huge room for growth in the Fenton area. Believe it or not, they had just a small, they called it Tri-County Parks and Recreation, that was just a little summer program. And what we found was, is that there were not a lot of organized things, like you'd see in smaller communities like Davison. For instance, Fenton did not have a youth football league, which was hard for me to believe, even though, because of the size of it and the three school districts. And so those were things that we found, that we could start to, say, make a name for ourself, if you will. And then we slowly got involved in other aspects of recreation and building collaboratives. And so it wasn't just a jump in and pull a rabbit out of your hat type thing. I'm real into metrics and data analysis, in who your partners are, all that type of thing, before you step forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkins?
Could you describe a time when you organized, managed, and motivated others on a complex task from beginning to end?
Yeah, I think the most recent one was, that I can give you an example of, is the city of Fenton had something called Art Walk. And they wanted, the Lakes Area Arts Council was running it, and it was ran totally by volunteers. And the city came to us and asked us if we would take that and sort of turn it into something else. And so, we said we would consider it. We looked at the man-hours, we looked at the time it would take, the staff, the locations, the safety of it, blocking streets, all those types of things, and wanted to see if it fit into our mission statement. And recreation has a broad mission statement, and we had good partnerships with the city of Fenton in terms of doing their farmers' markets and their concert series and their back-to-the-bricks activities. So we said we would take this task on. And we developed a budget, and we presented it to the DDA. And then we formed a very broad committee, and I was the chair of the Art Walk for the last two years. But we pulled in elected officials, we pulled in staff, we pulled in volunteers, we pulled in someone from the FIA to help us out. And so we built this huge committee. And from there, we developed it, we took it over and it had 36 vendors, and I think last year it had just about 100. And so we looked for, we combined, we got the police involved, the DPWs, all that type of thing. And we had to market and brand it, and it's now, it's a very successful event.
Thank you.
Mr. Massey?
Yes. What is the key to success in communicating with the public?
Well, I think there's maybe three elements to it. The first one in this day and age is, you have to have a clear message, and you have to know how to get it effectively out there. And I think we've all been tuned in on what the, you know, the social media platform, if you will. And in my last job, we looked at that, and we were not, we were not as social platform-minded, you will, as a lot of other places were. So we started to go to get educated on how these things work. And so we put together a platform that would brand and market our product to the community as simply as possible. And what we decided after going to seminars and that kind of thing, is that we found that we had to do it on it through Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, constant contact, and then with a state-of-the-art, as good as we could afford, website. And we wanted to make sure, what we were trying to do with it, is drive the public to register online. And we went from not having registration online, and I think this year, we're at about 64% of our registration would be online down there. So I think you have to get your message across clearly, and nowadays, it's electronically. Your brochure is still a number, is right at the top there, in terms of distribution. But more and more from the study groups we put together, we found that most of the people who were signing people up for classes were parents, a lot of the times a mother, in that 25 to 40-year-old age range, and they were doing it on their tablets and their phones. And that's how we communicated that way. In terms of other communication, in terms of things like safety, school closings, all those types of things, you'd be tied in with the, obviously with your website, but we would use Channel 5, Channel 25, 66, for any of the types of school closings. And then the other one is, the other is complaints. We had a process, not a policy, but a belief system, if you will, that when we have complaints about programs, that the people who were complaining about those or having concerns, they were contacted within the day they came, and then that process, if they couldn't handle it, it got to the director within 24 hours. So we felt that complaints were, is like the third component of that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Thomas, would you like to ask the fifth question?
Okay.
I'll go ahead if you, Mr. Atkins, go ahead.
All right. What would you have liked to have done more in your last position, and what held you back?
That's a good question. There wasn't a lot that was holding me back in that position, because it was designed as a, there was a board of directors, and they met once a month, but it was driven by the staff and the executive director. I think if one thing we could have got involved in more, and it did hold us back, is the development of more park properties. We did a lot of service and other types of projects on park properties, but when it came to the ownership of a piece of property, like Creasy Park, or Bicentennial, or one of the ones in the city here, there always seemed to be a different element of a sense of ownership, if you will. So we always knew that the township wanted to take care of their park, and we could do activities in them, we could help fund things, but they didn't want us to own them. And I think, because the way Southern Lakes was made up with three municipalities and three school districts, the politics get complex. And I think if there was one thing that was holding us back as an organization to grow, were probably the politics on the ownership of properties.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Ms. Lane?
What current trends in community recreation do you find interesting? Is there anything we should be doing differently in our current operations or programming?
I think, it might go back, Ms. Lane, to what Mr. Massey asked about communicating to the public. It starts there. I think your social media platform has got to be improved. And I'm not shooting darts at anybody, because that's easy to do in this business. But I've gone to that website, and I consider myself a quasi-expert with trying to find information on the internet. That process is not easy. And so, that's where I would begin. In terms of trends, I think you're looking at a lot of activities in one area for people in their 50s, 60s, even into their 70s, who want to do more athletic things. I think I told the committee, and you might have been in there, I just quit playing basketball about four years ago, you know, and it's something I just love to do. And I'm just from that era, where I just like to compete still. So I think those types of things, I think I mentioned intergenerational things I would like to see more of, that you don't see a lot of, between grandparents and parents and kids. And then, I think I used the example, we call flipping the coin. If you've got a program that runs really well, say, it's a, well, I think the example I used was daddy-daughter dances. And I don't know who came up with it, I can take credit, because nobody helps us here, somebody said, "Why don't we have a mother-son dance?" So we just termed it flipping the coin. And so we gave it a try, and the daddy-daughter dance last year had about, or mother-son dance had about 350 people at it. So you look at it that way. The other thing is, you have to metric yourself against what other communities are doing. And I didn't want to, I don't, and I'm not saying what you're asking me is a gotcha question, but I don't want to come in here and say, "This, this, this, and this will work in Graham Blank." Because when I worked in Davison, we couldn't get a lot of art programming going, and we tried and tried and tried, and we couldn't do it. When we went down to Southern Lakes, we just found, after an analysis, is that it was a more arts-based community. And so if you look at the programming that they've got down there, about half of it is related to arts and enrichment in some ways, and not athletics. I don't expect this township department to be a basketball, football, and baseball juggling act. I don't expect to see that. I would like to see more enrichment classes. I started teaching Potoski Stone classes down there a couple of years ago, because I'm a rockhound. Things like that, things that, more science classes. We started getting into classes with a relationship with former. I used to work at former, I know some of the people who are still there, so we started bringing those science and environmental things down there. And I think some of those things probably worked naturally at the Creasy Park, because of the nature area you've got, and then the water element, too. But to come in and tell you, I would, it's got to be a study done, is what I believe you have to do. There isn't any magic wand to just create programming.
Thank you. Mr. Gooze?
Yes, thank you. Why do you want to be the Parks and Recreation Director, Graham Blank Township?
That's another good question. You say really good ones for the end. Well, I'm not ready to retire. I feel that I know how your system has worked in the past, and that I can come in here and bring in some mentoring to the program, to develop it into what the board may want to see. I think I've got those skill sets. I still have, I've got an energy for Parks and Recreation. I think I told the committee again, I grew up in Flint, and I took part in so many fantastic community education programs when I was a kid. I used to go to Lincoln Park, was where we went, it's Broome Park now. But my mom would give us a quarter, and we'd go down there all day and do the potlott stuff, and then we'd go over the boardwalk to Southwestern to take our swim classes. Those things still energize me. And I think I've told the subcommittees, the subcommittee, the goal of Parks and Recreation is to try and get people involved at the earliest stage, and then to try and keep them as long as you can. And that's exciting to me, to see kids who went through the program, and then years later, and it really happened to me, a young lady came to work for me, and she liked it, and she went into the profession. And, you know, you get them young, some of the youngest classes are swim. Keep them till 13 or 14, you may lose them as they're getting jobs and a car and all that kind of thing, but then you get them back. And that excites me. And I know, it's always, and don't take this wrong, firing police, firing police, firing police, you know, those are the hot topics, they're the biggest parts of your budgets. But I tell you this, I'll keep kids away from the police, and not doing things that the fire department have to take care of, if we can get as many of them as we can. And that excites me.
Okay, Mr. Limita, where do we go from here?
Those were all the questions that the board had for you. Is there anything that you can think of that you think the board should know, that we haven't asked you in one of the previous interviews or today, that you think would be important for us to consider moving forward?
No, I don't think so. I've done lots and lots of interviews over the years, and gone through many processes, and I will tell you, what you guys have done is pretty thorough, pretty comprehensive. You were welcoming, that's one of the things that does, helps people feel really good about coming up and talking in public, because it's not easy all the time. And, no, I just appreciate the process. Whichever way you go, I wish you guys the best of luck. I learned a lot from your people who you had here, and I'm just ready to give it back.
Thank you very much for meeting with us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm early? Awesome.
I can slurp real quick. You gotta get the caramel off the bottom.
Yeah. You wanna taste the beer?
I don't even get the caramel.
Right?
He's excited.
Right?
Right?
Our fearless leader.
You're part of the subcommittee, your job could be here.
Our fearless leader told me, "What did you say? You're gonna turn off my credit card machine if I didn't show up? Is that what you said, Scott?"
Turn off the electricity.
Turn off the electricity, take the insurance off the vehicles.
Another night of salt and chub in the room.
Well, do we want to take a break for a few minutes?
Yes, maybe.
Sure. Do we have anything to discuss right now, or?
We had the.
Let's take a 10-minute break and see if we can get the next candidate in. Okay, well, we'll reconvene the meeting now at 3:40. And at this time, Mr. Limita, anything to begin?
So, we're gonna introduce you to Patrick Linehan. Again, we had two candidates for you to interview today. We have the list, the same seven questions, I believe you follow the same format of the board members, we'll each ask a question. If there is, he's gonna start by doing the same thing, is he's gonna tell us a little bit about himself and the things we need to know. Not everybody had the opportunity to meet him. Everyone has seen your resume and application, but we want to hear it in your words. And then we'll go through the seven questions, and then after those questions, we'll ask you if there's, just in case, if there's anything you want to add. And we appreciate if you kept your answers relatively clear and concise. With that, come on up to the podium.
Come on up to the podium, Mr. Linehan. Tell us a little bit about yourself, as Mr. Limita asks.
All right, thank you for having me here today. So my name is Patrick Linehan. Right now, I am the current Park Superintendent for Genesee County Parks. In my role there, I am in charge of the day-to-day operations of our maintenance staff out in the field. Right now, in the summertime, we're looking at about 80 seasonals and some full-time within my division. With that, I wear a lot of many hats in the position. This time of year, you know, we're working on grants, getting RFPs, RFQs together for all the supplies and things that we need going into the future. Also, right now, we're working on our staffing plan and budget for the next year. Parks and Rec is something that I kind of fell into. Like many people in the profession, I started working in it in a seasonal capacity, and liked what I was doing. I started out at Kalamazoo County, where I was a seasonal park attendant. You know, I opened the park, I cleaned the bathrooms, I sat in the gatehouse, I mowed the lawns, and I really enjoyed what I was doing. the lawns, and I really enjoyed what I was doing there. Ended up going to the city of Portage where I was a park ranger, then became the senior park ranger. There, had a staff, I believe of eleven that we took care of. During that, we also did programming and that out in the parks. We did the Haunted Forest with Western Michigan University Sororities every year and that was a big philanthropic project for them that we worked with them on. We came up with the Family Fishing Fair, which if anybody is familiar with the Project Fish program that Michigan State University does, we started doing day camps and that. In the summertime, ran day-to-day operations of our canoe livery. And in the wintertime, the day-to-day operations of our outdoor refrigerated ice rink and any programming that had to do with that. After that, I decided that I really did enjoy what I'm doing and I went to Central Michigan to get my degree in Recreation, Parks, and Leisure Services with a minor in Event Management. From there, I was a park manager for Isabella County for a year. I also went back to Portage where I was the softball commissioner. We had a hundred-and-forty-two teams in the summer league and about forty in the, in the fall league. From there, I ended up at Genesee County Parks where I started out actually as an intern and worked my way up. I've been with Genesee County for about five years now. Starting from the very beginning, I was heavily involved in a lot of the projects and that that were going on and that was kind of my specialty. So I worked as a project coordinator. Then I ended up becoming the project manager, which was also the interim Parks Superintendent. And here I am today.
Very good. First question, Mr. Perrin, or I'm sorry, Mr. Lenahan. What do you think makes a good organization and what makes a Community Parks and Recreation Department, quote, "one of the best or best place to visit"?
Okay. As far as the organization goes, you're looking for the forward-thinking and really understanding what it is that you're offering to the community. To have a solid Parks and Rec department, whether, you know, you're heavy on programming, facilities, whatever it is, first off, knowing exactly what it is that the community wants and needs. From that, you know, quality parks, recreation, programming, trails, it's what brings people to a community. You know, that's something that people actually look for. Businesses, they look for those sort of opportunities for the people that work for them, you know, when they're looking at coming into a community. So, you know, Parks and Rec play, you know, we say it's all fun and games, but Parks and Rec, you know, is a, is a big part of the picture in a community.
Thank you. Mr. Mansour?
So, Patrick, if you would, please describe how your prior positions required you to be proficient in development, analysis of operational, programming, and capital budgets.
Okay. So, right now, one of the things that I work on extensively is to develop the projects that we're looking at in the parks. So, you know, there are a lot of capital needs that we have to plan for. Long-term planning is essential with it, but you have to identify those needs way before in the future because you're large capital projects, you just can't do that right away. You need to budget for it and you need to, you know, make those decisions. You know, one of the main things is setting priorities for that and assessing the, what your needs are and how that fits into the picture. Can you repeat the question, please?
Describe how your prior positions required you to be proficient in the analysis of operational, programming, and capital budgets.
Okay. Yeah. As far as the analysis goes, you know, with programming, with the capital, you just have to have the insight. Sometimes that's going out and, you know, especially with programming, finding out what it is, you know, looking at the data. How many people do you have coming? Is it something that you can combine with something else? You know, what, what the needs are, so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is that Mr. Atkins?
Yeah. Describe a time when you organized, managed, and motivated others on a complex task from beginning to end.
All right. So, one of the things that I do on a regular basis, you know, is project management. So, you know, one of the main things to do is, first of all, sit down with everybody involved in the process. You know, if everybody's not on board and not on the same page, it makes it very hard throughout the process. So, you know, getting any ideas, any clarification through that and coming up with a plan and timeline with everybody and setting those goals and executing it through it. You know, once the project gets going, you know, making sure that you're hitting your benchmarks and coaching the people along the way.
Good, thank you. Mr. Massey?
What is the key to success in communicating with the public?
Being open, available, and to the point.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, or number five?
I'll take this one, too.
Sure.
So, what would you have liked to have done more of in your last position and what held you back?
I would have liked to have done more long-term planning. That's something that I really enjoy. While I do have the opportunity to do that on a semi-regular basis, it's not something that I get to do as much as I would like.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lane?
What current trends in community recreation do you find interesting? And is there anything we should be doing differently in our current operations or programming?
Okay. One of the trends that I find interesting right now is the relationship between the elder generation and the younger generation. A lot of places now are starting to do programming that kind of is a blend, whether it's a mentorship problem, or mentorship program, or just a situation where, you know, the class is maybe opened up to a larger age group. Some of that, too, has been, you know, just exposing each other to each other through, like, maybe the placement of where the program's taking place and that sort of thing. As far as the offerings that Grand Blank currently offers, you know, looking at the initial programs and that, I think there are some, some very good programs. Going into the future, you know, partnerships are popular and, you know, something that you really, that we have to look at going into the future is, you know, I think partnering with the Historic Commission and maybe doing some stuff at the Perry House would be interesting. You know, teas, fairy tale sort of thing, other communities have had success with that. But overall, I really wouldn't rush to judgment too much without actually, you know, going out and talking with the people that are doing the programs and, you know, finding out a little bit more about, you know, what they like about them, what they don't like about them and that, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guza?
Yes. Why do you want to be a Park and Rec Director for Grand Blank Township?
Well, Grand Blank Township is a progressive community. I'm actually a resident currently of Grand Blank Township. I've been here for the five years that I've been in, in the county. I use Bicentennial Park, I've been to some of the programs and that, you know, and I've, you know, I've been impressed with this, you know, with this community, so.
Okay. Mr. Limada?
So that's all the questions, believe it or not, that the board had for you today, but this is an opportunity for you. You've gone through, you know, a couple of interviews now, you've had a lot of time to study Grand Blank Township, you understand our transition into the new Parks and Recreation Department. Is there anything we haven't asked you or any information that you feel would be important for the board to know about you as they make their decision about who will be our next director?
So for me, I have the inner drive to always, you know, make myself better. I seek out professional development regularly, whether it's through the organization that I work for or on my own. Right now, I'm a current Certified Parks and Rec Professional with NRPA, which I got on my own. Certified Playground Safety Inspector through NRPA, which I did on my own, and same thing with the Aquatic Facility Operator through NRPA. Now, I use all those in my job currently, but those were things that I took upon myself to do to better myself and the organization, so. Always up for, for a new challenge.
Very good. Well, I think this time, we'll, we'll thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the board is going to bring it back here and I believe we're going to take a recess for a few minutes and let our committee meet. Dennis, where did you want to meet?
We can go into conference room B.
Right across the hall.
Yep.
I guess the committee will go in there and we'll wait here.
Some committees going in there. It's not the rest of the board, it's just those three.
No, like I said, the subcommittee.
Yep.
Or committee or whatever. So take a recess and...
Get back to order.
Meeting back to order and I'm not sure who wants to speak on behalf of the committee.
Yeah, so I'll say this, so I'll say, "On behalf of the Parks and Rec Subcommittee and based on the interviews and evaluation of the credentials of the candidates, we, of the credentials of the candidates, we are going to recommend to the board to offer the position of Director to Patrick Lenahan, with the final employment agreement to be negotiated by the Superintendent within the guidelines provided, presented to the board."
Support.
And the motion is supported, the discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So let me just make sure, at this time, what we will do is, Mr. Limada, you will extend the contract offer to this individual?
Yeah, so based on the board's motion, I will contact both candidates, actually, but I will let Patrick know that we're offering a conditional offer of employment contingent upon successful completion. What I hope to do is bring a contract to you for Tuesday evening's meeting and then it will be a conditional offer just pending clearance to our background check.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.